Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the January 8th meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council. Our newest council member, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, fair, just, equal, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Councilmember Nelson?
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Present.
Vice Mayor Lopez Taft?
Here.
And Mayor Karpinski Costa?
Present.
Thank you. Video statement, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is live and recorded closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Today's meeting replays Monday, January 13th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Thank you. Next item, please.
The next item is approval of agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Schaefer, second by Councilmember Middleton. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Passes. Next item, please.
The next item is presentation, item number four. Presentation by Citrus Heights Women's Club, update on community projects grant-funded project.
Hi, City Council members. I'm Jean Marie Welby, the immediate past president of the Citrus Heights Women's Club. The City Council had given us a grant for our Friendship Bag Project. I remind you, the purpose was to distribute needed items to residents of Citrus Heights in a durable cloth bag. The project not only impacted the community, but it also impacted all who participated and were touched. It was really great to see every person who we shared about the project had excitement about it, a contagious joy about it, about being a part of what we were doing in Citrus Heights. It really did my heart good to see that enthusiasm. And some of our people were the part, we partnered with the assisted living facilities, residents, staff, family and friends of the residents, Meals on Wheels participants and families and staff, and our Citrus Heights Women's Club members were a part of it. Even the retail staff who brought the items to my car from Sam's Club, the banker who I deposited the check from the city with, was excited about being a part of this project. And that even went on to the people I ordered the items from and those that delivered them to me. It really did our hearts good to see all that we could do and impact people. It takes effort to do something memorable for those who have limited connections outside of their home. And we saw that with the residents of assisted living, because a lot of them don't get out very much. And I saw smiles on people's faces as they experienced something bigger than themselves. And we can see that on the pictures that are on our PowerPoint. And I want to thank the Citrus Heights Council for this opportunity to utilize this grant. We had fun doing it, and we plan to continue this project with our remaining funds. So this will go on.
And I am Elise Splice, the current president and president from the time before, a time We followed the model, what we did here, we didn't just make it up. We followed the model from a previous project from 2012 to 2019, where we made oncology bags for adult patients experiencing chemotherapy. Since we had a lot left over from that, we went shopping in our storage unit and helped to clean it out. And a lot of the things, okay, and pillow.
Pillows?
The pillows. And then we also had blankets and a lot of, whoops, and a lot of personal items that we used. So we had a huge storage that, thank God, is empty now, thanks to this. So we were able to reuse a lot of the things. And this project promotes, as she said, community involvement and working with the facilities and the seniors who do call these places homes.
The specific assisted living facilities that we partnered with were Oars on Greenback. They have 50 residents, and my vang is in charge of the organizing of that. Kosher on Stock Ranch, and they have about 100 residents. And then Meals on Wheels. The picture shows the people who receive Meals on Wheels at home, but we also linked up to those that went to Crosswoods to receive Meals on Wheels in a restaurant-type setting with tables and chairs. And there's some pictures also that we have of that. Yeah, there you can see on our PowerPoint where we were able to meet with them. And then we also had an article that was written by Elise at the Citrus Heights Messenger on April 26th. It made the front of the paper. So we were very proud about that. And then we partnered with the city on the bags. The bag fell down there, but I'm sure you recognize that. Before beginning the work of this grant, our club went through some leadership changes. In March of 2024, our goals were modified to fit the remaining time that we had, and we became busy bees working on the grant's work. I led the team of club members. After general discussions and approvals, we ordered the items. We kept track of a budget on Excel throughout the project. And then with carefully bonded, carefully budgeted funds, we ordered customized products from Four Imprint. Here's the cup that we ordered with our logo on it. Here's the stress ball with our logo. And here is the coaster we ordered. And we wanted things that were compact, small, lightweight, you know, easy to give out, you know, not anything difficult to give out. And that was really great to link up with Four Imprint. And we also found out from Four Imprint that they have future grants that might be a possibility. So we'll keep that in the back of our minds, too. And then we purchased some items. We went to the 99 cent store, which hello, was going out of business, and we took advantage of the deep discounts. We got stocking caps, hot chocolate and candy from there. We went to Dollar Tree, and we got this solar stake light that they requested. This was on the wish list. I'd never used it, but the people wanted it, so the people got it. And then we also gave them coloring books and coloring and, you know, different puzzles and games and stuff like that. We went to Sam's Club and got individual treats in bulk, and people would bring it out to my car, and I'd zoom on over to the assisted living and say, here it is. And we got that, through Amazon, we got stuffed, the small stuffed animal keychains. And those were a big hit. And we continue these contacts, and we continue to ask our partners, what is on your wish list? What would you like? You know? And people always love it if you ask them their opinion, you know, what do they want? And we took in some donations. We had a member who loved paperback books and gave us a zillion of them. And I remember the Meals on Wheels people that we met with at Crosswoods, there was one lady that was a voracious reader, and she just was like, oh yeah, I'll take everybody's book, and they passed it on through. So that was awesome.
Okay, we're almost done. Almost done. Okay, let's see. And so for the future, we are going to continue to use these, and we ordered a bunch of things like hand warmers, and we'll eventually get foot warmers. So we're still working with Amazon like that. And so you can see from the pictures, Amy, can you go back to the ones when we're at the table? One more at the table. Okay, you can see in the back on the bottom, those are all these cups lined up. And we just zoomed through, you know, we got everything organized, and then just a big dig line, big line in all of these. So it was fun. And let's see. And so you can see the impact, and you can see, can you go with the happy faces again? There's some, oh, like, oh, let's see. Wait a minute. Oh, see, one on the left, that's somebody we know. I think that's somebody named Carol Spicer. Yes. She, and see how happy they are? I mean, it was just, it was really neat to work with them and to, we thought we were giving, but hey, you know how that goes. We were getting back more than what we were giving. So, and I feel that what we're doing specifically, we didn't realize it when we started, but fits into the whole thing with the community in the city of Citrus Heights and how they're working more and more. And I wanted to mention her especially now because Natalie, where are you? Miss Natalie? I thought she was here. Okay, well, she is the president of Reach, and what Reach is doing is working with all the communities, and everything they're doing is to make the community stronger. And I just wanted to let her know that I appreciated what she's doing by going to NUSA and bringing back programs that are supposed to be strengthening our community, like the ice cream thing that she brought back. And so I'm just really glad that what we're doing is also piggybacking off of what all the areas are doing. Thank you. I think that's it.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to know that we invest our dollars, our people's money dollars into groups like this that help out our community. So I'm glad that you guys got the grant, and I'm glad you used the money well and shared with us what you did. Very nice.
Thank you so much.
Very nice. You made a lot of people happy.
Yeah.
Now get your junk out of there. Next item, please.
The next item is presentation, item number five. Presentation by International Association of Human Values, update on community projects
Thank you so much.
You don't have any stuff to put on the table.
I don't have stuff to put. Respected council members, wishing everyone a very happy New Year. My name is Deepak, and been facilitating the Sky resilience training for which we got the grant for our veterans and their families, and that was later extended to the other residents of the city of Citrus Heights. Using the grant, we were able to provide Sky resilience training, which helps reduce stress, which helps reduce anxiety, which helps reduce depression, to promote better sleep, to promote better wellness and overall happiness in a participant's life. Stress is, you know, one of the leading pandemics, World Health Organization says, that, you know, stress leads to violence, stress leads to anxiety, depression, bad health, and, you know, all the, everything starts with stress. And our Sky resilience training has shown very effective in reducing anxiety by more than 57%. So here, we got the grant, we brought it to our veterans and family, have a short video on some of the experiences and, you know, how we presented training. So Amy, would you play the video? It's condensed, it's a little choppy, but thank you.
Hi, my name is Lea, and I just completed the Sky program. Honestly, every day I felt better about myself, my inner being, my connection with God. It's been a true amazing turnaround for me. I feel like a different person, to be honest. I'm just really happy that I got out here, and I didn't let anything stop me. It's a life-changing event, and I encourage anybody who can come out and do the Sky therapy to do it, especially if you're suffering with anxiety, depression, PTSD like me, it's worth your self-investment, and there's nothing but good to come out of it. So y'all come out here and give it a try.
My name is Lori, and participate in Sky training. It's a breathing and wellness training, the breathing techniques. I would recommend this training for everyone. Feel a deep love for others.
My name's Jean Ransival, and we learned with the Sky lessons. It's, I think everybody should go through this.
I'm Sharon Frost, and after practicing some of their repetitions, I was able to feel, I was more able to feel love for others.
My name is Howard. I think everybody should try this class. May give you a different perspective of life.
I'm Terry, and the benefits of Sky are so, they're tenfold, hundredfold. It's just, there's no limit to what it can do for us.
To more than 40 veterans, families and other residents, we were able to conduct 200 wellness sessions, 200 participant wellness sessions that included some breathwork, that included some meditation, and for participants to get a taste of what it would feel like to have a stress-free mind. You know, we are made up of both matter and spirit. Often, we look at a matter, right, often take a look at comforts for our body, but what about our spirit? And when we do these techniques, the breathwork, meditation, that can really help into tap into your inner being, help reduce stress, so that we can lead a happy, happy life. So once again, we'd like to thank all, you know, council members to be able to give us the grant so that we could bring it to many more, we could bring it to the residents, especially the veteran population. We plan to continue to do more with the funds that is left, and we hope to continue offering these services to the residents of the city of Citrus Heights. Thank you.
Thank you, Deepak. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a confession, is that my husband and I took Deepak's training, and it was a two-and-a-half-day event or so. And Ted was nice to me for the whole week after that. It was like, stress was gone. It's a good program. Next item, please.
The next item, item number six, is proclamation of the city of Citrus Heights proclaiming January 2025 as Neighborhood Area Awareness Month.
I have asked Councilmember Nelson to handle this proclamation.
Can I invite the members of our neighborhood areas to join us for the reading of this proclamation?
Absolutely.
If you're a member of a neighborhood area board, president, member of even just a neighborhood area, you've been to something, please join me up here.
What about the neighbors?
If you've been to a neighborhood area meeting, you're participating in your neighborhood area, we would love to have you join.
What a good-looking.
Everybody is a part of a neighborhood area, in case you're wondering.
That's right. Jody calls.
No, we don't, you can spread it out a little, there we go. Awesome, thank you. We'll look at Kelsey, Councilmember Nelson.
Hello, everyone. Gosh, what a good group.
Yeah, I meant eleven.
All right, so we have the proclamation of the city of Citrus Heights proclaiming January 2025 as Neighborhood Area Awareness Month. Whereas the city of Citrus Heights recognizes the importance of strong, engaged and vibrant neighborhoods as the foundation of a thriving and connected community, and whereas the neighborhood area network provides opportunities for residents to work collaboratively on a shared vision for the future and enhancing community pride. And whereas strong neighborhoods improve public safety, encourage neighbor-to-neighbor communication, and help prevent blight by promoting care and stewardship of homes and shared spaces. And whereas engaged residents are essential to the success of community initiatives as they contribute their time, talents and energy to improving their neighborhoods through volunteerism and leadership. And whereas awareness and participation in neighborhood meetings, events and activities strengthen community ties, improve understanding of local government processes, and ensure the voices of residents are heard and valued. Whereas celebrating Neighborhood Area Awareness Month highlights the contribution of residents and community leaders who have demonstrated exceptional commitment to enhancing the quality of life in Citrus Heights. And whereas the city encourages all residents to take pride in their neighborhoods, become active participants in community discussions, and take part in programs and initiatives that promote collaboration and civic engagement. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim January 2025 as Neighborhood Area Awareness Month in the city of Citrus Heights, and encourage all residents to recognize and participate in this effort to strengthen our neighborhoods, foster civic pride, and build a connected and resilient community.
Thank you. I'd just like to take a moment to share a little bit about why this initiative was brought forward from the city and in collaboration with our neighborhood areas and Reach. Our neighborhood areas do a lot. They often go unnoticed. The people who are here, standing here today, are the ones who have been putting in a lot of hard work to bring more attention to the neighborhood areas and to keep doing the work. And our hope with Neighborhood Area Awareness Month is to bring to light the great work that they're doing and that is already in place for residents who aren't currently involved to step into. The work is being done, the foundation is set, all you need to do is participate. So that's what we're doing. We're asking residents, if you live in Citrus Heights, you also live in a neighborhood area. It's time, make 2025 the year, to find out which neighborhood area you live in and get involved today. They're always looking for neighbors to participate in any scale, whether you just want to be a friendly neighbor who smiles at people across the street, or if you're ready to sign up and be on the board. They are waiting for you. So don't hesitate, make this the time that you get involved. As part of this initiative, we're doing a little bit more to robust the efforts around our neighborhood areas. You should have already gotten, we're hearing that they're dropping in mailboxes already, a neighborhood area mailer. So this was a strategic objective by our city council that we wanted to make as a part of this Neighborhood Area Awareness Month. And every single resident and business, Councilmember Schaefer, is going to get, or has already gotten, a mailer just telling them which area they live in and encouraging them to participate. So if you want to grab that for me, Elise, this one right here. This nice little mailer, it is tailored to the specific neighborhood you live in, so you're getting the information that you need to get involved with your area. So definitely check that out. If you haven't gotten one, feel free to let us know, we can get you one. In addition to that, we'll also have some banners going up around our city, just promoting the Neighborhood Area Awareness Month. They're taggedline with the saying, "Your neighborhood, your voice." So your neighborhood area is an opportunity for you to have your voice heard. So get involved and make your voice heard by getting involved. Last but not least, we've got some awesome signs that we've given out to our neighborhood area leaders as well. You can see them here. These are yard signs that will be distributed in your neighborhood for you to get involved. They feature a nice QR code and link for you to sign up and learn more about your neighborhood.
Love it.
So we'll also be, last one, actually, I was kidding. We've also, we're gonna be doing a social media campaign as well. So maybe you're not walking around, maybe you're more on the digital side of things. We want to make sure you're seeing things, too. We're gonna be doing a social media campaign highlighting each of our neighborhood areas. All eight of them will get a post. We'll be talking about the importance of them, the value, and the stories that make each of them unique. So we're really looking forward to that, and thank you to each of our Reach and Neighborhood Area representatives up here today and to every single person involved. We really appreciate you.
Is it picture time?
Yes, Mayor, it is. If we could have everyone stay up here, we'll have council come down and get a picture with your proclamation, please. And NA leaders, please don't forget to pick up your yard signs at the end of this meeting.
If everybody can move towards the back for me. Just line up along the dais. Get real friendly so we can fit everybody in. Amy, will you?
Looks like a state. Always.
Yeah.
Come on in. You got it, Amy?
All right, one, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do they call that standing on the fence?
That's exactly what it is. Ten toes down.
Okay. Next item, please.
The next item is public comment. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each. The mayor has the discretion to reduce the allotted time. We have a countdown display that will flash red at the end of the allotted time. Also, consistent with the Brown Act, the council is prohibited from engaging in a discussion or taking action on any item not appearing on the agenda.
Okay, I have, I have one speaker for item 13, and I'll hold that until the item that's called. And I have four for general comments. You titled five minutes, it's only four people. So first is David Shelton.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members, my name is David Shelton. I was surprised by the change to a limited number of fireworks on New Year's Eve in the area I live in. It was not like the Fourth of July, but I live in the southwest corner of the city, Area 5, with Fair Oaks about 800 feet to the south and Carmichael about 2,000 feet to the west. This change in activity leads me to propose two kudo awards. One, Code Enforcement Member Dylan Burke, and two, Citrus Heights Police Department Click It and Fix It Procedure for Use on Fireworks and Hope
called. And I have four for general comments. You titled five minutes. It's only four people. So first is David Shelton.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, my name is David Shelton. I was surprised by the change to a limited number of fireworks on New Year's Eve in the area I live in. It was not like the Fourth of July, but I live in the southwest corner of the city, Area Five, with Fair Oaks about 800 feet to the south and Carmichael about 2,000 feet to the west. This change in activity leads me to propose two kudo awards. One, Code Enforcement member Dylan Burke, and two, Citrus Heights Police Department Click It and Fix It procedure for use on fireworks and hopefully gunshot sounds. First, my review of coenforcement. I met Dylan Burke at the police department. I outlined my issues for three houses on Brook Crest Way. One was a vacant house with weeds and general appearance needing attention. B was house was vacant, or house had fireworks on the Fourth of July. All of it was in front of their house. There was no house number displayed on the house, and there was a large storage container in the driveway that had been there for over a month. And C was automobile repair was being done in the driveway with a car up on blocks in the dirt. Dylan provided me with his email, his cellphone number, and told me that if he wanted, if I ever wanted any updates or thought things were going different, or he wanted just to know, give him a call. This worked perfectly. The conditions that exist now is the first yard is now maintained. It looks like a house is vacant, but it's well-maintained. The second house, where the fireworks are not available for lease, the house is now available for lease. There were no fireworks in front of the house on New Year's. And C, the cars under repair and on blocks are gone. Continuing now to number two, kudo. Click it and fix it. There were no fireworks in a small area near me, but in an unincorporated Fair Oaks and Carmichael, there were four fireworks. Fireworks are the ones, to me, that go up like 50 to 100 feet and then explode. And there were many, many, many gunshot wounds. Not wounds, just gunshots. It's difficult to determine when you're looking at something that's very close to you, how far away the fireworks is, because light travels at about 50 miles a second. So something happening in Sacramento 35 miles away, I see that at the same time as something which is very close to me. They all occur in the same second of time, because it travels 50 miles an hour, 50 miles in that one second. The gunshot locations are far more difficult to determine because they echo. Anybody who's done using rifles or pistols or anything, the echoes, you can't coordinate it. You need real points to coordinate it. The gunshots are a serious issue, because guns are pointed at the ground. That's the safest. The bullet goes in the ground. You point it at a tree, if you miss the tree, chances are there's a house behind it. And inside the house, hopefully, there's no child in a crib, or a parent walking, or anything like that, who's going to stop the bullet before it goes further into their house. And third is when they shoot it up in the air. That is the most dangerous, because when you shoot it into the air, it has to come down. And when it comes down, it can last on your car. It can land on your roof. It can hit you on the shoulder. It could even hit you on top of the head, or it could come through the ceiling or through the roof and into a crib where it's for a child. So the issue for bullets is not the noise, it's what they do. So in summary, I want to thank the council for allowing me to present my ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Keeping with the Davids, we have David Warren.
Good evening. My name's David Warren. I've come here tonight to request that the city reinstitute several days a year for the collection of hazardous waste. At the last roundup of trash in Crosswoods on Crosswood Circle, I came out early in the morning and found paint cans, broken light bulbs, et cetera, et cetera, materials that shouldn't have been there because they're not allowed. There was a car battery sitting there. And I think one of the reasons is that in order to dispose of such things, all of the car battery, you can take it to any auto parts place and get rid of it. Some people are too lazy to do that, but the paint and other materials like computer motherboard, that kind of thing, laying on the ground, which should go over to the North Gate disposal area, people just aren't going to drive there. Historically, we had three times a year over at Sunrise Mall, and we were able to dispose of old bulbs and things like that. We're not doing it anymore, which is encouraging people not to properly dispose of hazardous waste. It is problematic that we are encouraging hazardous waste to go into the trash. Just think about a light bulb, the old CFLs, the old compact fluorescent light bulbs. They're burning out at a rapid rate, and now there's no place to get rid of them. There was a time you could take it to Home Depot or Lowe's, and they would dispose of them. They won't do that anymore. For people who have fluorescent tubes, there's no place to dispose of them as you used to be able to do. It's a danger to the community, and I think that we should sponsor that type of clearing three times a year at a site that the city can control, so we can safely reduce hazardous waste going into the trash. Thank you very much.
And next, we have Alfred Sanchez.
Is this thing on?
Working.
Like I really need a microphone, huh? Mayor, members of City Council, I just want to say that we had our sixth annual Homeless Persons Memorial Day. And first and foremost, I would like to thank Adolberto's Restaurant for allowing us to have it there. And we couldn't count how many people, because it was more than we normally have, but it was about 30 people showed up for this. It was a very somber event. Everybody got to talk, and all the homeless people got a burrito bought for them. And I want to thank you all, or congratulate you on your appointments. And I'm looking forward to this year. I don't know. I just have a good feel about it. I got a good energy about it. I think we're going to accomplish a lot of things. And that's all I have to say for today. And I'm Alfred Sanchez. Did I say that? Bye, guys.
Thank you, Alfred. Hang on. Next speaker is Colleen Cowallader. Colleen, how do you pronounce your last name? I've seen your name 100 times in print, but I just never say it aloud.
So very easy. Cadwallader. Syllables. Cadwallader.
Okay.
You can do it.
How about just Colleen?
Come on, Mayor. You can do it. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Colleen Cadwallader of the San Juan Education Foundation. I'm the executive director there. I'm here this evening to thank you so much for the $10,000 nonprofit community support fund given to the foundation late last year. Most importantly, I'm here to give you a quick progress report, as well as to invite you to join us and get involved. With a mission to harness the combined power of philanthropy and partnership to propel student achievement and enrich the lives of educators, these funds will help us bring our community, school, family support project, and $1,000 to nine Citrus Heights schools. Schools are already busily planning how they're going to spend this $1,000 to support a new or elevated family and community engagement strategy. These strategies will be culturally responsive, collaborative, and interactive. They will build upon our families' strengths, creating trust between schools and families, and offering families a better understanding of how to support their students' learning. At Grand Oaks Elementary, April Art Night planning is underway. At Skycrest, funds will be used to purchase new books in languages other than English to support an open library school concept for preschool families to utilize. Carriage Elementary will be piloting Family Math Fun Days, and Kingswood is planning its first-ever multicultural night. We invite you to join us in building a stronger community through family and community engagement, and we'll keep you informed as these projects come to fruition. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Colleen. Our next speaker is Scott Kinderwater.
Mayor?
Oh, that's item thirteen. Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Rachel. I didn't see the thirteen up in the corner. Okay. Then that's it. Any other public speakers? Now's chance. Go, come to the podium, give Rachel your card.
I think there is one more in the audience.
Okay. You fill out one of these cards and give it to Rachel?
I gave it in. I don't know why you don't have it. My name is Bridget Duffy.
Oh, I did see that. Wait a second. Got thrown to the pile. There you are. Yeah. I'm sorry.
No problem.
I'm Bridget. What you got?
AKA Bridget of the Bridge, building bridges, tearing down walls. I come in peace. I'm here tonight just because I have, this is where I have to go. You're my local government. I don't have real easy access to Congress or Senate or the executive branch. So I just wanted somewhere to go to say out loud, in public, and for the record, that I do not consent to another Trump presidency. Al Franken was forced to step down from being a senator for making a couple of lewd jokes in the 70s. I do not accept a president with the history that this person has, including two impeachments where he was let go without any trial. I don't accept it. I do not consent to it. I think, I speak for a lot of Americans, but that's yet to be seen. But I just needed to get this off my chest and into my government's ears. And you are my government, and I thank you for being my government. It is a grave responsibility, and especially right now. It's a grave responsibility. You take an oath of office to uphold and defend the Constitution from all threats, both foreign and domestic. And right now, when I look up into the sky every day, there's crisscrossing seed clouding planes putting aluminum into my atmosphere. There is probably fluoride in my water. There is glyphosate in my food. This, healthcare, this is the government's responsibility. For-profit healthcare is no longer optional. It's not acceptable. People are dying because they don't have enough money to pay for insulin, while CEOs are making tens, sometimes hundreds of thousands of dollars off the taxpayer. So no, it's not acceptable anymore. You is my government. You're the lowest, you're the city government. You're the closest people I have to talk to, so that's why I'm talking to you. But I'm telling this for a lot of people throughout this country, to a lot of government representatives, senators, congresspeople. This is a time for people to step up. It's not going to be easy. There are thugs about. There is mischief about. There is corruption. But this is the time for us to be brave. This is the time for us to find the Moana in us. This is the time to be brave and clever and strong, and that goes for us as well as for you. So aloha. I absolutely come in peace. I see a future that is not violent. I don't condone, I don't consent to money being spent to kill other people abroad when nobody is coming here to hurt us right now. I don't agree with that. I don't agree with a lot of that stuff. And I see a future where we don't need that stuff. We don't need to have wars for oil at all, because we have other energy sources. And those other energy sources are leading to a whole new economy, you know, that has been plagiarized by nefarious people. But a whole new economy is absolutely possible, a green economy, not only trying to help the environment, but also the lovely green of cannabis. Cannabis offers us a great many alternatives to fuel, paper, material, medicine, all of it. So I see a green future, a peaceful future, a loving future. But it's us who have to make that happen. It's not just going to happen by itself. We see it. We feel it in our hearts, and now it's time to make it real for everybody. Now's the time. So thank you for listening. Aloha again.
Thank you, Bridget. Any other public comment? Okay, can we go to the next item, please?
The next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
I'll start with Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I will be appointed to my first boards tonight, so I'm very excited about that. And just, I'm happy to be here with you all. It's great to see so many people come out to tonight's meeting. Hope everyone had a happy new year, and I'm looking forward to 2025 alongside you. Thank you.
How about Councilmember Schaefer?
Well, thank you, Mayor. So our last meeting here was on 12/18, 12/19. I had a SACOG meeting. It was very jarring a little bit, because a lot of folks who ran for reelection there did not, were not successful. So we had a pretty sizable turnover on SACOG as far as the Board of Directors go. So we have a little bit of, sort of, everybody settling in and getting back to business. So we have a next meeting tomorrow. So, and then, that was on the 19th, and then on the 23rd, tragedy struck. My district, Mercedes and Van Maron, a young man was hit by a car and killed. He was, it was late at night, not late at night, 9:30, 9:45. I don't have any more information on this particular individual than what I've read, and it's all available to you. But it's just a tragic, there was apparently a DUI driver involved, but it was a sort of a perfect storm of circumstances, where a sort of safety got thrown to the side. If the driver hadn't drank, maybe he would have stopped in time. If this young man hadn't been riding his bicycle out at 9:30 at night, well after dark, maybe that would have, I just would implore, this is just heartbreaking to me, that this young man was 18 years and three days old, and it just has such a life in front of him. And I went by and looked at the memorial that was set up for him, and it's just a tragedy that didn't need to happen. And so I just would ask, you know, you talk to your family and your friends, you've got to be more careful out there. This young man did not need to lose his life. So, that being said, so yesterday I attended Rosario Supervisor, Rosario Rodriguez, and Rich Desmond's swearing-in for the Board of Supervisors. It was a very well-attended event. I think both of those folks are incredibly qualified to hold their positions. I think our county is in pretty good hands. And so I look forward to working with Rosario and Rich, because both, well, Sue Frost was on SACOG, Rich is on SACOG, but they're great partners to work with. So I wish them the best of luck. With that, I will wrap up my comments. Thank you very much, Mayor.
You left one out. You left one out.
I left one out?
You were my mayor for the Monday.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's, I was, yes, that was, I don't remember what date that was.
I'll come to it.
I think it was the last Monday in December.
16th.
The 16th, okay. That was, it was, that was...
When I can't do it, he fills in.
Yes.
He's my backup.
Yep. That's coming up again at the end of the month.
Yes. Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. No board meetings for me. We'll wait and see what the assignments are for this term around, but I want to say that I hope everyone had a very great new year, a very wonderful Hanukkah, which just recently ended, and looking forward to like the next set of months coming up. 2025 is going to be a great year. I know that our council is going to get a lot of good things accomplished this year.
They are. How about Vice Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I really just want to say Happy New Year. You know, a new year comes with so much promise, so much excitement, so many plans. And I was reminded today, because I was talking about writing business plans with... And I was reminded today, because I, I was talking about writing business plans with a community group, and writing your goals for the year is like your personal business plan. What kind of business are you going to handle this year? And I'm very excited about what we, as a council, are going into planning with for you, our residents and our community. And, you know, hold us accountable. I, I love that we have residents who feel comfortable to come to their local government and say how they feel. Because this is your public forum, and we only have you to tell us how you feel. We, we don't try to make things up. We are wanting to be responsive, but in order to be responsive, we need to hear. We need to hear how you feel. We need to hear what you need. And so I appreciate all of you for your future participation in what we do here for everyone's benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it's true, our last council meeting was December 11. It seems like it was a long time ago. But we went to the, Sue Frost had another going-away party on the 15th of December, and I gave her a plaque on behalf of the city. The lady who ran the party didn't allow me to read it. So Sue just took it, she'll take it to Arkansas with her and love it. But we did do that. On the 17th of December, there was a mosquito meeting. It's really neat, at the end of the year, and I started this when I was chair many years ago, all the department, we have our department heads, but then we have the, the workers underneath the department heads, and they come forth on the last meeting in the year and talk about everything they did that year and the number of, of places they went, you know, all the various sources that they eliminated, backyard sources, whatever. We didn't always hear the little stories, and so we got to hear all the little stories at the end of the year. And then we have a holiday lunch, or Vegas Awards, and so it was kind of a nice event. We do it every year, and I just like going to that. We had a city luncheon on the 18th, and we recognized our city staff for all their hard work throughout the year, and I just want to reiterate that thank you to all our city staff throughout the year. And I know, I agree with Alfred, that 2025 is going to be a great year, and our council sits here ready to serve you. On the 20th, representing Area 10, I put on my Santa outfit, and I delivered food to 12, no, 12 households, and that took me most of the day. I did Monday with the mayor on the 23rd and on the 5th this last month. And if it wasn't for Mr. Shelton, sometimes I have nobody. So it's, it's an opportunity, if you are shy or you want to get information, if we can't give it to you that day, we at least find a place for you to get the information. And so on Mondays from 9:00 to noon is Monday with the mayor. Stop by, have a cup of coffee. We're right in the, in the, off, in a little alcove off of the main, as you come in, the main doors of City Hall. If I'm not there, then I ask him to fill in. So take, take advantage of the opportunity to have informal information any way you can. Sometimes people come and give kudos. Sometimes people come complain. We find a way to make you happy. On the 21st, what did I do? Went to another, oh, the Citrus Heights Marching Band had a holiday event. These holiday events are nice, because we get to thank people for their year and everything they did, and we love our marching band, so we did that. And then I had a Zoom meeting with Regina, head of our General Services, to meet with a woman who is in charge of the CABT Californians, no, Coalition, Coalition Against Big Trucks. So there's legislation pending in Washington. It doesn't have a bill number yet, because they have new, new people, so the bill has to be reintroduced this year, as it was introduced last year. We'll get a new number. And it allows trucks to go from 81,000 pounds to 91,000 pounds, and this is a big difference in tearing up our, our roads. So there's a coalition that's nationwide, and she has a list of everybody that supports her. Right now, the bill does not have a number. When it does, we'll probably take, or at least discuss having a unified force against it from our city. Most, all the cities are against it. League of Cities is against it, and to me, that's good enough. But it's, it's, she points out different accidents that the trucks cause, you know, then we have issues with, you know, the weight of the trucks, the weight of the batteries, you know, the weight of the, if you have electric trucks, whatever. So anyway, that was, that's more to come on the big trucks. But it's scary to think that a truck that size could be traveling down Auburn Boulevard on its way to try to avoid the, the weigh station. This morning, I had a sewer meeting. I am now the chair of the sewer, which is why you're just the alternate. She wanted the sewer. But the things that we, one thing that was brought up today is, we increased the rates, as you know, last July, and as the rate went up, the board decided we should also increase the amount we give for the lifeline assistance, so that the people who qualify, low-income people who qualify for rate assistance with SMD or PG&E, also qualify for rate assistance with sewer. And so what would that do to our budget if we did the outreach, like, they, the staff was directed to do increase outreach? So if we did the outreach, what would, what would happen to our budget if we did that? And we have a little bit left in the budget to use, but if everybody that could qualify under SMD were added to the sewer, it would be 56,000 more people. So that would kind of, so we're going to do it in stages and phases. So if you are an owner and you get a discount from SMD or PG&E, you will be getting a notification from the sewer that you're eligible for a sewer rebate. So it comes to about $30 a year towards collection and 165 a year for treatment. So that's about about $200 a year, so the bill comes every two months, so it's about $20 off your bill every month and of your bill, your billing period. So worthwhile if you qualify. Right now, the renters, it's hard, because even though you may pay rent, that includes the sewer bill, the bill's not in your name. So at this point, you don't qualify for any rate assistance. But we're going to work on, that's phase two. We're working, when we get to phase one squared away, then we'll work with phase two. All this money is not funded by rate payers. It's funded by our non-rate, non-fee money that we get, you know, interest from investments, whatever, whatever. It's not funded through rate payers. So I think it adds another $1 to $2 million to our budget, and other than that, that's it for me. Been busy. I'm still busy. I like it that way, though. It's good. Okay, our next item.
The next item is Consent Calendar. Items number seven, approval of minutes. Eight, second reading ordinance amending Citrus Heights Municipal Code, Chapter 42, floods. Item nine, on-call solid waste consulting services, Project GS 2024-13, award of contract. Item 10, resolution adopting amended salary table. And 11, neighborhood improvement partnership grant, Neighborhoods USA Conference Attendance Policy.
Would anyone like to pull any item for separate vote or discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a motion?
I'd like to move approval of the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Motion by Schaefer, seconded by Nelson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving along. Next item, please.
The next item is item number 12, multimodal impact fee addendum, and this is a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members. Regina Cave, your General Services Director, and with me is Casey Campenar, Community Development Director. This item before you this evening is for consideration of an addendum to the multimodal impact fee nexus study. So some background on this item. The city adopted the county's development impact fees, including roadway and transit, following incorporation back in 1997. Those fees actually had been in place since 1998 and did not have indexed to COLA, or to impact, excuse me, increases. In 2022, council adopted a multimodal impact fee nexus study. This was to evaluate, looking at current and forecasted land uses and streamlining some of the categories that we had at that time. The study analyzed the relationship between growth and demand between residential and non-residential land uses, had to be related to demand for facilities generated by new development, and we looked at residential measured by dwelling units and vehicle miles traveled, as well as commercial land uses measured by thousand square feet and vehicle miles traveled as well. So the fee schedule that was approved in 2022 is before you. It has the residential, retail, and employment, and there's the impact fees, which were per unit or square footage in one category. And then over to the right, just for reference, I've also included what those impact fees are today. We did index those to the CPI. So how are our impact fees determined? We look at land use growth assumptions. We have a capital improvement plan, multimodal improvements to accommodate growth, which was also incorporated into the nexus study that had been approved by council back in 2022. Looked at a lot of our corridors, our existing pedestrian and multimodal uses, and how those could be supported by new development. And then we determine a cost per DUE or dwelling unit equivalent to support that capital improvement project or program attributed to any potential growth. And it had to be, again, proportionate to those impacts of new growth. And then we apply the DUE or the dwelling unit equivalent cost to those land uses. So what are the fees used for? The fees must be used to maintain the same level and quality of services for residents, even in situations where you have new development that comes in and they create those impacts. You're not looking to better your facilities, you're looking to at least maintain those facilities. And this is not maintenance, per se. This could be improvements, but to still keep those same levels of service. That would include your road construction, including your pavement, your sidewalks, curb, gutters, ADAs, ramps, median, striping, paths, trails, streetlights, and traffic signals. Now, going back, I'd mentioned roadway and transit. At that time, we decided to consolidate our fees into what we call a multimodal use to anticipate future uses and future demands on our facilities, since we were trying to move away from just roadway and transit and trying to incorporate all uses of transportation. And the projects and improvements, again, were included in the 2022 nexus study, which is available online and in our city clerk's office and is referred to as the Master Capital Projects Listing.
Part of the reason the addendum is being considered is the, there was a recent Supreme Court case called Sheets versus County of Colorado, so local here, and it really added some guidelines for how you do impact fees and reaffirmed the proportional nexus required. But it's erred on the side of more analysis than less, and so the way we've structured this is to, there's some one-size-fits-all, but there's also a lot of things that don't fit nicely in a box. So this gives us the ability to do the additional analysis as suggested by the Supreme Court and provides the guidelines on how that's done. So the addendum would apply to a few different categories. We have a lot of, a fair amount of projects that require traffic studies, so that's actually a really easy calculation to do. They have the VMT associated with that. We also have occasionally, we get unique uses that are not typical, that have weird VMT and have different impacts on our roadway system, so that allows us to analyze those. And then any analysis, we'll look at the use, the size of the, of the use and the geographic location, and that'll have a unique fee based on, on that, those parameters. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. The recommendations on the screen.
Any questions from council members? Questions, 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 questions? Okay, it's public hearing. Open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? Close public hearing. Entertain the recommendation.
Can I make a motion?
Go for it.
I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 2025, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, adopting an addendum to the multimodal impact fee nexus study.
Second.
Schaefer Middleton? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item.
The next item is on regular calendar. Item number 13, city boards and commission appointments.
Okay, so I have one speaker for this, and I'll call him up, to Scott Kinderwater.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members. My name's Scott Kinderwater, and I'm applicant for the Planning Commission. I'm a retired soil scientist. I'm vested in the community. I've lived here 13 years with my family. I work a couple of days at the Oars, which was presented earlier with all those great photographs from the Women's Club of Citrus Heights. I work in engagement one day, and then I'm the activities bus driver, and today was the highlight of my week. Wednesday is when I drive the seniors throughout Citrus Heights on a scenic drive. I feel that I could contribute to the Planning Commission, and thanks for this opportunity to introduce myself.
Thank you.
Um, Mayor?
Who's saying Mayor?
Over here. I also have one written public comment, which I could read now.
Please.
Or following, okay. This written public comment was submitted by Andrew Saunders, and he states, "It was my honor and privilege to run for the City Council District One seat in 2024, and I congratulate Kelsey Nelson on being the newest council member representing District One. I value greatly the experience afforded me while running my campaign, as I made many new friends in this city and created important relationships in the Sacramento region. I also learned a lot about how the city currently operates, giving me a strong desire moving forward to serve it in any capacity. My request to you tonight is, I would like to be considered for an open Planning Commission seat. My 30 years of successful small business management and the hundreds of large telecommunications projects seen through the completion should be considered as a very valuable experience in my request. Also, the fact that I am retired and will be able to devote my full energies and efforts to the success of our city. I love this city and would greatly, and would be greatly honored to be appointed to this Planning Commission seat. I also want to wish all of the members on this City Council well and look forward to the continued progress and the positive direction our fine city is currently heading. Thank you."
Is that the only one? Okay.
And good evening, Mayor and City Council. Amy Van, City Clerk. So I'll just briefly provide an introduction of this item. So several Planning Commission and Construction Board of Appeals seats expired as of December 31st of 2024. The city accepted applications from November 7th through December 13th. We received a total of 17 applications. Two of the applicants also applied for, they applied for both the Planning Commission and the Construction Board of Appeals. So tonight, there are four positions to be filled on the Planning Commission, two of which are individual appointments of Councilmember Schaefer and Councilmember Nelson, and then two at-large appointments. And then there's also three seats on the Construction Board of Appeals with the two applications that council may consider. I do recommend the Councilmember Schaefer and Councilmember Nelson announce their nominations, their appointments, make a motion and take a vote on that. And then I have a spreadsheet that I can share with council and request that each council member provide their top three candidates from the list that's remaining, and then for, for consideration for the at-large appointments. And so it'll tally the results, and then the council can deliberate and discuss the nominations at that point.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. I was just going to take subsection C first. This is the Construction Board of Appeals, and my question is, because I, I know that one candidate asked if he could be on both, but my question is to city manager, do we need that commission? Do we, is this something we can do to get rid of it?
You know, it's a, it's a commission that, that's an appeal board that I don't know we've ever used. And we've looked into this because of just the fact that we haven't really utilized it, what other cities do, and most cities handle it as more of an ad hoc basis. So for instance, there was a recent building in Marysville that had the fire. They pulled together in a ad hoc committee of building officials throughout the region that are experts in that area to kind of talk about matters that would be heard through a Construction Board of Appeals. So there are other methods that may be more effective candidly. It's just our municipal code speaks to this appeal board, so if the council wished to delay that decision, we could certainly come back with an ordinance amendment for consideration to go to one of these more ad hoc boards, given that it's not something we use very often. And there's also paperwork associated with keeping a board like that up, filings of Form 700. filings of Form 700s and the like. And if they don't meet, then it, sometimes it's much ado about nothing.
I don't think they've ever met.
Not to my knowledge.
In 20-some years, so. I'd like to, if I could get a second from one of the council members, put that off for now and have a future agenda item on what our alternatives are.
I'd second that.
Okay, second, third, or fifth. So let's, let's bring that back.
We, we'll do so.
And then we'll refrain from appointments for now. And then the two members who currently serve, continue to serve, I guess, until there's no item before them. So we'll kind of just hang on for that one, okay?
Sounds like plan.
All right, so let's do to the Planning Commission. So council member Nelson, yours pick.
Firstly, I'd like to say I was very impressed by all of the applicants. We had some really great candidates in there, and it was a difficult choice. But my selection is Mr. Al Hakim Al Rawi.
I liked him. That was good. Good.
I, I will say that-
I'm impressed. I liked him. That's good.
I liked them too. I liked all of them, actually. And, but I do favor one, and that's Oleg Chishko. I'd like to appoint Oleg Chishko to a four-year term.
Okay. That leaves us, so now we all, how do we do this? Do we just?
Well, if, for the at-large appointments, if each council member could provide their top three candidates, and I will mark those respectively, and it will tally on the right so we can see the results.
Okay. I'll start with council member Middleton.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Name three.
My top three for at-large or for?
This is at large.
For the at-large, yes.
Got it. Just want to make sure I'm clear. Okay, Scott Kinderwater, Andrew Saunders, and, where is she? Amy Brown.
Vice mayor.
All right. I too did a lot of research. I felt like this was great homework to do. Thank you for submitting applications that we could really look through and wonderful videos. My top three are Robert Carlson, Tom Sheeler, and William Shirley.
Council member Nelson.
All right. My top three are James Remick, Jay Evans, and Glenda Green.
Who's your third one?
Glenda Green.
Okay. Council member Schaefer.
Okay, my top three would be Tom Sheeler, James Remick, and Amy Brown.
Okay. I just want to say, this is 17 applications, and it was, there are so many qualified individuals. These are people that if you're not selected for this commission, please get involved in your neighborhoods. You all have so much to give. It's, it, it was a very, I like the idea of having the videos, because the videos help me see people. And for that reason, based on the video, I really like Mr. Campbell, who wants a 15-minute city. I kind of like that idea. I like Mr. Utzig, and I like Mr. Kinderwater.
I'm sorry, what was the?
Kinderwater and Utzig.
And we have several that have at least two votes. So if the council would like to.
So what's the next process?
Well, we could take those, so that would be Tom Sheeler, James Remick, Scott Kinderwater, that have at least two, and Amy Brown. If we wanted to do another round with just those individuals to consider them, we could take another tally of votes if you'd like to do that.
Okay.
And again, would, and it's up to the council if you'd like to, again, nominate three? Or would you like each council member to nominate their top three from this selection to narrow it down?
Will that narrow it down? I think two would do it. Do you think?
There's two seats, but it's, if the council desires to just, out of the four, vote for their top two candidates, you could do that as well.
Top two, probably get it.
I think top two will do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, let's start the same. Portia?
Okay, it'll be Ms. Brown and Mr. Kinderwater.
All right. I will vote for Tom Sheeler and Mr. Kinderwater.
Kelsey?
Mr. Remick and Mr. Sheeler.
Mr. Remick and Mr. Sheeler as well.
I like Amy Brown and Kinderwater. What's that get us?
That gets us Kinderwater and Sheeler.
Kinderwater and Sheeler.
All right.
Kinderwater and Sheeler.
So Scott Kinderwater has three votes, and Tom Sheeler has three votes. And so at this time, with the individual appointments of the two council members, if council would like to make any motions, now would be the appropriate time.
Let's make a motion to, for these two guys.
I'll make a motion to appoint Scott Kinderwater and Thomas Sheeler to the Planning Commission.
I second.
Nelson, Tim, I think, Tim, Schaefer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations to our, our new guys. And I, I do want to repeat, you know, if you did not get appointed, please get involved in your neighborhoods. This is Neighborhood Month. This is like, now's the time. There is so much you guys have to give. When we looked at our neighborhoods and the assets that we have, we found that the people are our biggest assets in our neighborhoods. So get involved. So that takes us to the next item, I think.
The next item is item number 14, appointments to regional boards and committees.
And again, good evening, mayor and city council members. So each January, the city council considers appointments to the regional boards that are made by the mayor each year. Before you tonight, I have provided an overview of those council appointments to the various regional boards and local entities and two-by-two city council committees, ad hoc committees, as well as representative on the finance administration and quality of life. Several of these regional boards do require a resolution confirming the appointments. And so tonight, I have prepared a resolution confirming the attachment that was provided in your staff report that outlines, outlines the appointments that you see here before you. And so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Amy? So, oh, I see, so the resolution is for everybody at one, one spot?
Correct, yeah. I consolidated it to, to one resolution confirming all appointments, but it was necessary for those boards that required formal action by the council.
So just for the purpose of the public, I wanted you to know that this last year was on the consent calendar. And this year, I wanted it on the regular calendar to let you know that our, our council distributes itself throughout the county on regional boards to participate in our regional, what goes on regionally. Just so you know, that we don't just come twice a month to sit here, that we are out busy. A lot of these boards require a lot of spare time. In making decisions, we ask the council members to choose their preferences. I have tried to give everybody their preference where possible. And then I, my other consideration is to try to leave consistency on the boards so that, take, take council, vice mayor Lopez Taft. Last year, she, she made an impact on her boards, and it would be good to keep her there if she wanted to be there. So, because the consistency on the boards leads to, you know, you know staff, you know the issues. And so I, I kind of, kind of keep people there. So if there are unhappy campers, I'm sorry. That's why I did it. So, okay, so we'll start with Sacramento Local Agency Formation Commission. I am the alternate. The, the lead person is Galt. So I will go to those meetings, and if Galt isn't there, I'll, I'll be there. So that's, that's a two-year commitment. So it goes Galt, and then Citrus Heights will be the lead agency two years from now. Not the lead agency, but the lead city, the cities rotate going to that. Sacramento Metro Cable Commission, they don't meet as often. I think they meet four times a year, Portia, do they?
That's great.
You've been on there before, right?
Yeah.
So I put Portia there with Lopez Taft alternate. Sacramento Public Library, Mary Jane, you did a good job last year. Continue the good work with Portia as alternate. And it's really important, if you're not going to be at a meeting, that you let your alternate know, because I've been to some where SacCity doesn't send an alternate, and there's no quorum. And then it's really upsetting to staff of these boards not to be able to conduct business. So, so please, if you cannot attend, that's why you have an alternate. Ask them as best you can to go. With Sauer, I know you wanted that, Kelsey, but you'll have to wait till I'm not there because, I'm the chair this year. So, but I think they send agendas to all the alternates, so it's good for you to keep up on the agendas. STA, you're going to get that one. This is the one I've been dying to dump on somebody, and so I will help you. Regina will help you, and so we'll get through STA, okay? It's a tough one. SECOG, Tim is doing such a great job, and you work your way, as you sit around this big giant table of, what, 29 people?
There's actually 31 board members. They don't actually rotate around the board. You just pick your own seat when you go.
Oh, okay, well, when I was there, it was like you moved up as, as you got seniority.
But I will, I do want to comment that it is really important to develop relationships with other board members and staff on these boards. So for changing a lot, it is, it's, it's really kind of cumbersome to really, and it takes, especially SECOG is a very, they handle complicated issues there, so definitely.
And SECOG is kind of tied with regional transit for a lot of their work. So Tim wanted regional transit, you got it? Portia, you're getting Sacramento Metropolitan Quality, because you've been on that, and you did such a good job. We used to do your reports. I used to be in the audience watching your reports, and I used to be on that. I love that. That is a great assignment.
Well, we'll, we'll see how that works out. I actually have a conflict, and I was trying to work that out. So maybe, Tim, you might have to be attending a good number of those meetings.
You can go by Zoom. You can Zoom them. They prefer the people who live in the outline to Zoom in so they don't pollute the air. It's, anyway, Sarah Aquino is the chair this year?
Oh, yeah, I know Sarah.
Okay, so talk to Sarah. Maybe, you know, you can figure out some way to do. If, if that's impossible, then we can probably work out something else.
What, when does that meeting take place?
Nine thirty in the morning, I think.
Air quality is the fourth Thursday of the month at 9:00 AM.
Right, yeah.
Can I change it and put Kelsey on as the alternate? That would let her go to air quality if Portia can't make it? Would that work, Portia?
Yeah, that sounds, yeah, fine.
Okay, so I want to, I want to change that to put-
So council member Nelson is the alternate on the air quality.
Yeah, you don't need to, you don't need to. Okay, and then the homeless policy council is Lopez Taft. Education two-by-two, I'm going to duke it out with Tim. And the parks and rec, I'm going to duke it out with Nelson. Now, we won't be duking. It's, it's a fun little thing. SAC Fire, Mary Jane, you wanted that. You got it? And I put Portia there with you. And then Marketplace is, is it one person goes to the marketplace or two? Do they, two go?
When Brett and I were assigned, he liked to go, because he was the primary last, previously. And, you know, again, in building relationships, we both went, but either one.
Okay, one or both?
Yeah.
Okay, one or both. And then Finance is me and Tim, and Quality of Life is me and Kelsey. Is that okay with everybody? Then if not, let's, I mean, if so, let's do a motion.
Need a motion?
Yep.
Can I make a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, confirming appointments of city council members to serve on council standing committees and various regional authorities, agencies, commissions, and committees for calendar year 2025?
Second.
Schaefer Middleton, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Got through the tough stuff. Now let's do the fun things.
Fun.
Next item, Rachel?
The next item is Citrus Heights Police Department Animal Services Unit Service Enhancement Update.
Happy New Year. Thank you for having us. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm Tiffany Campbell. I'm a police services manager at our Citrus Heights Police Department. It's my pleasure to present to council, along with Police Services Supervisor Debra Miller. Supervisor Miller is the Animal Services Supervisor. And tonight, we are here to provide an informational report in response to community feedback and to present an Animal Services Unit update on some specific focus areas and to present an, excuse me, on focus areas as well as highlight our animal services units' accomplishments and future goals. As some folks know, we've suffered great loss this past year with the passing of one of our teammates. But our team is resilient, innovative, creative, and most importantly, caring and compassionate. We are very compassionate with the animal services work that we're afforded and that we do together as a team. With this informational report, there's no fiscal impact or action associated, and it is a council strategic goal. And I will now be glad to turn it over to my colleague, Supervisor Miller. And we appreciate you taking the time to read our comprehensive staff report that we submitted as well.
Police Service, Police Service Manager Campbell. We have the opposing between us, so I can't get an iMessage to you, someone moved it. But I just have a couple of quick comments I want to make on the strategic objective, if I may.
Yes, sir, I didn't see.
That's okay. It's hard to see through this thing. But I just wanted to speak to one item for clarification. This strategic objective that Manager Campbell just spoke to was adopted at the last Strategic Planning Retreat in March, and it was talking about enhancements to animal services. Since that time, we have purchased a property that we closed on, on October 31 of 2024, on Old Auburn Road. And we've talked about a vision for some additional enhancements to animal services, potentially that property as well. The focus of tonight's report is really over the course of what's happened over the last year and the enhancements that have made, been made that when this council objective was adopted at the last retreat, that was the vision. This property was something there and above, and it's something that we're still vetting out and talking about. And I'm working with our executive team, as well as our other staff, on some options that we'll present to council and discuss in greater detail at our upcoming March Strategic Planning Retreat. So I just want to make that distinction, that what you're hearing about tonight are the enhancements to the existing unit. We're not here to talk about the Old Auburn Road property. We're not there yet, but we are going to be having that discussion. Well, first discussion we'll have is at your Strategic Planning Retreat. So I just want to make that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, I'll turn it over to Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Manager Campbell. Good evening, council. I'm Supervisor Miller. It is my pleasure to update the council on our service delivery enhancement since contracting with the Bradshaw Animal Shelter this past September. I would like to share the added benefits to the better, to better support our animal community members. With moving to Bradshaw and the contract, we have access to a local shelter where an ASO, which are animal service officers, can quickly process their animals and redeploy them back into the city. them back into the city. Having a 24-hour call center allows call takers to take detailed information from a reporting party that quickly uploads into the new animal and tracking software system. It comes with two dedicated vets, an onsite hospital, which is different than the previous contract that we had with Placer. It also allows us access to local adoptions, fostering, and Bradshaw has a robust volunteer program. Additionally, over the last 12 months, our staff has accomplished some great wonderful things that I'd like to share, such as Chip Chip Hooray.
That's a great.
Great banner.
A great banner.
We are extremely proud to have the support and generous donation of microchips donated by our very own mayor, Dr. Jana Karpinski-Costa, for our chip event and the ongoing free chipping that we provide to our citizens. Local kennel dedicated for our patrol staff, which is something that we added this past year, which minimizes animals going to the shelter and keeps the officers in our city. We also transitioned staff to county animal control radio channel, integrated the new software system, Chameleon, as well as the new intake shelter process. We worked with a local nonprofit for a special TNR operation with 40 cats, which was a great success. Council requested staff to research and provide an update on TNR. And I would like to go over what we discovered and what we found out. So what is TNR for the folks in the audience that has not heard of TNR? That is a trap neuter release. It's a humane method for managing feral cat populations by trapping, spaying, neutering, providing aftercare, and returning to the field. Who did we contact and who were the participants? There are listed there 11 animal services agencies we personally reached out to to get feedback. What was the outcome? Well, it was 10 out of 11 agencies that unfortunately do not have sponsored TNR programs or dedicated TNR staff. Challenge is cited is labor, it's labor intensive, cost prohibitive. It's approximately $120 per spay and neuter appointment with limited infrastructure. What was interesting and Rancho Cordova was kind of the outlier out of this 10 out of 11, being the only one that offers an outsourced solution for TNR services utilizing a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that's supported by Measure H and R. These measures have assisted with the funding Rancho Cordova's Community Enhancement and Investment Fund. Save time report online. How to report an animal concern? We are with 311 Connect and I highly encourage our members in the community that there are multiple ways to report an animal concern online. The first one, which is scanning on your mobile phone to download the app and reporting online. You can also call into 311 directly, but the first two options for the app and the online reporting are really useful and beneficial because it can provide status updates and you can check history from previous concerns that you've reported. And having the 311 call center for 24 hours, we have seen a significant decline in the complaints for a response for calls for service. So it's been a really amazing enhancement that we've added in the last 12 months. Hot off the wire, this is fresh off the press. There are now a quick and easy way to license or microchip your pet. As you can see here on the slide, you can scan the QR code to either license your pet or license on the right-hand side, which is requesting an appointment with our staff for free microchipping. The pets are a part of our family and we want to ensure that we get fluffy back to you. So really, please, if there's one thing that you could take away from this presentation tonight, please license and microchip your pet. Future goals. Our animal services unit has some great plans for 2025 with a focus on community events for microchipping, licensing, and coming in the spring, which we're working with Bradshaw Shelter currently, right now, on the Paws Mobile Clinic and the Mobile Animal Mash Clinic. And also to conclude, we want to continue to explore local opportunities for customer-focused service enhancements and operational efficiencies. Thank you.
Council, as you can see, we've been very busy and robust at trying to ensure that our services are readily available to our citizens. An example of that is those QR codes. Staff can easily help license pets and we want to ensure that folks are hearing us to please license the pet because that really helps us keep the pets out of the shelter, thereby keeping costs down. Moreover, it's, it's a significant asset to have the support of the council to provide microchips so that folks can further ensure their pets are identified, so that we can help keep them in our community and return them home instead of bringing them to the shelter. And that really is everybody's responsibility to help keep the numbers low for the shelter. Aside from space, we just really want to get the pets back to the folks in the, in the neighborhoods. I'm very proud of our animal services team. We are a small team, but mighty. And to be able just to do a QR code and you can either do that or just come on into the police department counter and we could quickly, like within 10 minutes, take care of licensing your pet, that's something we're very proud of. We've worked very hard to streamline our processes and operational efficiency to, is very important to us. It is what helps us achieve operational excellence. So I just want to take this moment to thank you for allowing us to come back to provide the service update and let you know that we really put our hearts into this to make sure that we're doing the best that we can for our citizens and everyone as well. Thanks.
We licensing at PD or at City Hall?
Currently, as of today, it's PD, but we're hoping by next week it'll also be City Hall if they are able to assist us with that.
Either, either one.
Yes. And anyone that's here right now, we could go back, you could click the QR code and you can just sit right from your chair. You don't even have to go to the City Hall. You can just sit right in your chair right now, fill out a few items and it'll, it's very self-explanatory.
And then PayPal, is that how it gets paid, to PayPal?
That's a very good question and I appreciate that. We are not at PayPal or online payments yet, but nevertheless, you can leave a check, you can contact us and we'll work out obtaining payment from you with a one-time credit card payment. But online payments is something that we're very much hoping we're going to do with our integration of our finance system. I know that's always down the road, but we don't want that to be a deterrent. It, it's not a problem at all just to come on down to the department and we'll match that up. So we're working through.
No more Texas. No more licensing Texas.
No more Texas.
Okay. I went to a clinic today and the, and the gal at, the technician at the clinic said, "And you licensed in Texas?" I says, "I don't think so. I think we're ending that." So she's thrilled about that.
You're absolutely right. It is no more Texas. We are actually using the software system that is called Chameleon at the moment. Chameleon, and I know this might get a little bit into the details, but for those folks of animal lovers, Chameleon keeps track of your pet ID if you license your pet and we can put that information in. And that is the software system that our animal services officers are using. That's the software system inside the shelter. So there's amazing connectivity to that. That is one of those enhancements that we obtained by going with our Bradshaw Shelter. We didn't have that service before. So that is not in Texas, that's local.
And is that connected to the National Organization of Found Pets, that if your dog got hopped on a truck or someone took him and moved him out of the area that?
I don't know that it's national, so I don't want to speak to that.
Chip would lead them somewhere that?
I believe you're speaking about 24 Pet Connect. And if that is the case, yes, Chameleon is connected to 24 Pet Connect. So I do believe it goes all over, but I don't know if it's across the United States. I have to do further research on that. But it is immediate, it is real time. If we scan the chip, the picture can be taken and you can see that on the website right away for a lost, found pet. To that comment further, we will continue to work with our city partners. You know, Marissa does an amazing job on the city side with posting information and at our police department, our staff there is doing a great job as well to further share information on our social media platforms. And so with Chip Chip Hooray, you, we're starting to recognize that brand or with the other items that we showed that Supervisor Miller has successfully worked on with the QR codes and the Peps, you're going to see, start seeing that stuff, so.
Thank you for doing all this. I am a lover of QR codes and I just want for the rest of the public, if you go to the Citrus Heights website, even I just typed in animal services, on the left-hand side you get to the QR codes for Chip Chip Hooray and pet licensing. I love that, even though it was hot off the presses, you got it right in here. That's really important to me because when people hear things, they want to be able to utilize it right away. So thank you for getting that on there.
Absolutely. You bet. On the right-hand side, you can also click a QR code for microchipping. It's probably updating right now as we speak. So all of those things are just easily, readily available and we're very, very excited to really invite our public to just get involved, license their pets. And if you haven't licensed yet, no problem, we're here to help you with that.
So all the previous licenses, are they going to be transferred in?
Absolutely, yes. That is a process that we're currently working on, the integration with Bradshaw. So with technology, as you know, sometimes that takes a moment. Again, not a deterrent. Anybody can contact the department. We have systems in place to take care of that.
I did scan the QR code and it is a nice little form there. And so you were saying that people can call to give credit card information or will you guys reach out to them once they've submitted the form?
Ultimately, we would reach out if payment wasn't attached.
Okay.
But you're absolutely welcome to call us as well. There is a small step we need to take care of to ensure we're meeting our policies for basically a one-time credit card payment. Most cities that we've found do not accept payments over the phone by credit card and that's because of identity theft. So we want to be careful about that as well and take care of our community.
Or you could just come in person.
Absolutely.
We're only so many square miles.
Absolutely.
Did you have questions?
Oh, well, no, I just had a comment. It sounds like we're making some real progress and I appreciate your report. Thank you. Very good job.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Middleton, questions? I have a question about 311 Connect. It's more than animals, right? That's for everybody in Sacramento who has a leaky faucet and calls the landlord and it's for everybody, right? It's, so you're in line.
It absolutely is. One of the things that I was most impressed with when we were learning about 311 is they have what's called a service level agreement. And this is very important because their call takers are trained off of a particular document that creates operational efficiency. So for example, on particular calls that are urgent, a flood, a car crash, whatever the case may be, of course, they're going to take those first.
How do they know if it's urgent if you're online, you're on hold when they answer it for 35 minutes? How do they know what's urgent?
Well, if it's urgent, they're going to call 911. Anybody's going to call 911. But by the terms of 311 Connect, like a power line down, they, hopefully a citizen would call any 911 center if there's an emergency. That's always first and foremost, no matter what. The whole time sometimes on 311 can be a little bit extended, but to that specifically and speaking with their management directly, just in the last six weeks, they've increased their staffing.
Oh.
They figured out their staffing model and they went from two shifts to four. So it's very similar.
We could call it and test it and see how long it takes.
You sure, you sure can. But be patient because at times, folks need to finish their training and that's when staff really ramps up. So I know for sure, since we started the program, they've had six new call takers, if you will, added to the staff. In addition, they've added a supervisor. So they're really working hard. They are an award-winning call center and they are doing a tremendous job. What's exciting about being with 311 is that this set of leadership is new. And when we're talking about operational excellence, these particular training documents or these knowledge-based questions, it's really that template. For example, if you are a dispatcher for fire, there's a template you follow so that everyone's getting that exceptional service. My hat's off to 311 for also implementing something like that. Secondarily to that, I'm very proud of the fact that they are willing to work with us specific to that status we created called AHAP. You might have signed it on our PowerPoint. That's called our after-hours animal priority. That is something, that is a program that I'm proud to say your Citrus Heights Police Animal Services Team created. 311 dispatchers know when we are in what's called AHAP, which is the time after hours when our animal services may be at home on their days off. Those folks at 311 know what to do when it's an animal exigent priority. And that is a really good example of how a formatted template to provide service has increased our productivity as well as increased the information going out. I understand that there can be a late.
Does Bradshaw have someone, like say it's Sunday and you have an issue, will they send, Bradshaw will send somebody out?
No, I'm actually happy to say that. The reason I say I'm happy to say is we are keeping services local with Citrus Heights with our animal services officers. If it is exigent, Bradshaw knows what to do. They contact our 911 dispatch center and then our dispatch center, my partner manager, Cottrell, and her team have already been trained as well on when to call our, our animal service officers. So we have combated those types of issues. We've been extremely busy with training and teaching and creating new and innovative ways to get the job done.
Wow. I have another question about the low-cost pay neuter. Is that the same low-cost pay neuter that we've had for years that takes forever to get an appointment? Or is there, has that been increased any with our contract to them? Do we get any advance, you know, more service?
A couple of things. The standard CSN, as they call it, Community Spay and Neuter, which is the clinic next door, that's the same. New at Bradshaw, hot off the press again, working with the director of the Bradshaw Shelter. She's very innovative. They're doing a monthly clinic where they are using their team to provide vaccination services. So because it's January 2025, they are just starting their new clinic schedule and I wrote about that in our staff report. So in addition to being able to gain access to that as soon as it gets underway, Citrus Heights will know when that is, we're also trying to find other avenues, technicians and locations in order to provide those services. So that's forthcoming.
He's got a question.
I got, I got a question. So in your PowerPoint, you talked about 40 cats that you've done since, has that been since September? Is that 40 a month? Is that, what's the, what, what, what does that number mean, the 40?
Absolutely. I wish we could do that many a month. There's a cost associated with that for sure at about $125 a cat. Okay? So there was a period of time where we collaborated with Placer County. That was, right, that contract ended in October, end of October. Okay. I'm sorry, do I have that right?
September.
Thank you. August 31st is when we ended Placer County, began Bradshaw in September. Right before that, we worked with a nonprofit and partnered some of our funds with their funds and Placer Counties and we were able to help spay and neuter 40 feral cats. We absolutely would love to work with another nonprofit, similarly to what all the other animal services teams do in the region. They utilize and refer their citizens to work with other nonprofits that this is their area of expertise. So it's tied to funding and if there was an increase to funding, we would be able to work with that. But again, there are multiple service providers that this is their area of expertise and that's why Supervisor Miller pointed out, with the exception of Rancho Cordova, everybody follows the same protocol, which is their citizens working with those established 501(c)(3) s.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm looking forward to it. I gave, I gave Ash the, it's a law, bill that was just passed through our legislature, 1223, that allows training for veterinarians and I think some technicians can learn on high, high-frequency, high-volume spaying and neutering assembly line, spaying and it's assembly line. And so they're thinking that this will address of a population and unclear to me whether this would only be accomplished at the vet school or would they be out in the community, at least at the shelters doing the work or? So they take the training and then they become certified in this thing, technique of, I, I just can't picture it, you know, just have all these cats in a row.
No, I think you're absolutely on track to what's becoming customary and one of the things that I've been learning through this journey that's exciting is there is mobile clinics such that of what you're describing where they go quickly. Yes. And what we learned is there is the, the BAT clinics. There's also the Paws Mobile. And some of these mobile clinics are connected with the County Board of Supervisors and it has to do with the need in the community. And so I hope that that will be forthcoming because I do know that that there is a mobile clinic that's going in the North Highlands area. And it was interesting because finding out how our connection now with the county of Sacramento and literally in that shelter affords us opportunities to learn and to partake in other areas with the board of supervisors, the county board of supervisors.
That'd be good.
So expanding these options is exciting to see how we could get that mobile clinic here. So I think we're absolutely on the right track for that.
Sounds good. Any questions, comments from anybody else? Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good job. Good job, city manager. Next item, please.
The next item under department reports is item number 16, annual communications update.
Hello, council. My name is Marissa Brown. I'm the communications officer for the Economic Development and Community Engagement Department. It's nice to be here with you all this evening. I, if you've ever wondered what a communication officer does, you're going to get a glimpse into what a year in the life of Marissa includes. I'm excited to share this with you all today as our annual communications report for 2024. We'll do a quick overview of what our team does, our communications channels, media relations, awards and accolades, and then what's to come this year in 2025. Who's on our team? It consists of me and Director Huber at the moment. So we are a strong, scrappy team. If you've met us, you know that there's not a day goes by that we're not working on something. We've got our cameras up, we've got our smiles on, and we're doing stuff for the city. So it's great. Our communications function includes a lot of different things. We've got city council support. I know I've worked with many of you already on talking points, speeches, et cetera, campaigns. We've got media relations, which we'll talk about later, social media, website, our website. Supervisor Miller mentioned me. I get to help them with some of that animal services stuff as part of our website, publications, graphic designs, photography, video. You see me taking pictures a lot. I know you do. And internal communications as well. Some of our strategic framework, you can see here, just building a messaging platform that allows for consistency. That's a big one across all of our efforts, social media, reflecting what we're aiming to do, our key messages and our goals. Our, this strategic framework is built off of our strategic pillars, fiscal prudence, public safety, local control, which is spread throughout our key messages and brand voice. So we are a genuine community. We offer effective access to the region. We take charge of our own future and we're where small business thrives. Our brand voice across our channels tends to be informational, personable and community-focused. That's something we're really trying to have people see about us through our channels and our communications. Our goals include proactive communications that support those strategic objectives, our communications that are meaningful and keep in mind the needs of our community and our partners, measurable and that we can learn from them. Those are our goals for our communications. In 2023, we had a flash vote survey go out to our community about, of about 300 participants. And we asked them, how were you getting your information from this city? And this gave us a good pool of data just to see where people were hearing from us. A lot of people you could see were getting items from our email newsletters and our social media, online newspaper, which is popular in this community, and then our city website. We've got many of those channels up and running and I'd like to go over some of them today and some of our successes. So I'm going to jump into some of our social media channels first. So this is our Instagram. We have funneled a lot of energy into our Instagram and our Facebook page. I would say those are our top two channels right now. We get really great engagement on these channels. You can see we reached over 100,000 people, just one over 100,000, still over. And we had a really big increase of followers from 2023. So our audience consists of mostly Citrus Heights people with surrounding areas following closely behind. And just if you're a little curious, we've got 69.9% of our Instagram audience is women and the other 30% is men. So that's our Instagram account. If you don't follow us, this is my plug. Follow us on Instagram, Facebook, all of them. Our Facebook is our largest channel for our social media. So we had an increase here as well, a reach of over 200,000 users. And again, our audience reaching mostly Citrus Heights and surrounding areas. Again, women coming through on the social media channels. And then we also have some social media channels that are maybe not as popular, but we're still utilizing them. So when I came to Citrus Heights, Twitter or X now, it was not being utilized, I would say. And this was the channel that I said, well, it's here. Why are we not using it? So we made sure to revamp that channel is starting in 2024. So everything we post to our other channels also gets posted to Twitter. I find that Twitter is a place that people go to in terms of emergencies or like quick needed information. So I thought this was a good channel for people to see that we are active on. If something's happening, we're going to post on here. You're not going to see a post from 2019 that, that shows an inactive channel. And then LinkedIn is obviously a very different audience. We've got a lot of people there who are job searching, looking to get to know more about the culture behind City Hall and working for us. So we do our best to promote our employees and city events that we've got going on that really show the culture of working at City Hall and being a part of it. And we've also got employees on LinkedIn who are really great ambassadors of being a City Hall employee and a CHPD employee in that case as well. Our top posts of 2024 on Facebook, we had a really great post that had amazing engagement, 872 reactions on Facebook. That is awesome. This was a post about a San Juan Unified School District student or San Juan High School, San Juan High School student going on to compete on Hell's Kitchen. So it's pretty cool. I think people were really excited to see that a local student was able to go and compete on a show on a national level. So people were very excited to support him and his endeavor on the show. On Instagram, we love to shop. So our top post was home goods. The home goods opening had almost 200 likes. If anybody wants to go in there and like it, I won't be mad. So I can get to that 200 number. We had great, great amount of comments and shares as well, just telling people about our new home goods. So that's always a fun one to see. And then on Twitter, again, this is informational. We are making sure people have the info they need. Not a lot of engagement happening on Twitter, but that's okay. We're there when they need us. But we did have one like and three shares on our Citrus Heights Cooling Center. But at least they know about it. Three shares is pretty good when it comes to something like a cooling center. All right. So some other social wins for 2024, we had over almost 900,000 impressions. That is impressive, if I say so myself. These are people just coming to our channels, right? People that are seeing the city of Citrus Heights on their feeds, maybe.
Separate people? Are they like, just like all a separate people?
Yeah, these are impressions.
Not the same person coming back?
Nope, not the same person. So these are impressions that are, are being made. So maybe they're not following us, but maybe they see that Marissa liked to post. And then they see the city of Citrus Heights, right? They're getting just a little touch of Citrus Heights, or maybe they're getting the whole thing and they do follow us. So this includes all of our followers. And we had a 7.51 engagement rate across social media. It looks like a small number, but when you're thinking of all the people who follow us, we're trying to get them to engage with us. That's the win in social media is seeing people like, seeing people comment, seeing people actually interact with the post. So I'll take 7.5, 7.51%. It's pretty good. My goal in 2025 is to increase this number. I want to see people interact a little bit more, comment on, on the posts and keep liking our things. 690 posts across all social channels. It's a lot of posts. It's a lot of information, things we're sharing with our community, messages we're getting out. So it's exciting to see. And 1,300, almost 1,400 new followers. So new people we're reaching in our community, learning about what we're doing here in the city of Citrus Heights, just on social media. And I included some comments on our social media down below, just for you to see and enjoy. These are the ones that put a smile on my face. We love to see a happy comment reflecting on, on the good work that we're doing in our city. Some campaign highlights from social media that we had, Citrus Heights Cares, we had almost 13,000 reach across eNews, which we'll get into a little bit, 30,000 across social and 28,000 across website clicks. So this is for the entire Citrus Heights Cares campaign. So anytime we post about the campaign, a before and after, a, an award, we're talking about it, people know about Citrus Heights Cares. We highlighted 15 local businesses on our, on our Instagram and Facebook and social media channels this year. So just sharing that love, local energy, making sure people know to support local businesses in our community. That includes a lot of me going out there and getting to explore them myself. I got to do some, meet some of our business owners and take videos of them. And we have high ambitions to continue doing this in the next year as well. And those posts, across those 15, had a reach of about 30,000. We did a really fun campaign for Building Safety Month. If you've been in City Hall during Building Safety Month, you know that we've always got some hubbub going on and fun things. And we really wanted to extend that initiative to our community as well. While our employees know about the importance of building safety, we wanted to make sure that residents also knew about the importance of it. That included getting a junior building inspector, which is pictured here, Sienna. We had some social posts highlighting even some of the ways that kids can get involved, highlighting Sienna and her work, and then showing that our building safety team was out in the community at local stores, providing resources and materials to the community during this month. So those are some campaign highlights. Our website, as you know, our website is up and running. We've got a lot of information on there, really great information. We had over 300,000 website visitors and then 2,300 are subscribed to our newsflash. So anytime we're posting news, we are, they are going out to these 2,300 people. Our most visited webpages, you can see here, incident log, general citizen input form. That's a form that goes to, I believe, quite a few people at City Hall, including myself and PD, GSD, I know they're on it, and residential garbage and recycling services. So this, this is great because it informs where people are going on our website, what we can be doing to include in some of our other communications. Okay, people clearly want to know about residential garbage and recycling. What else can we be doing on our social media, in our newsletters to make sure people have all the information they have without having to go to our website? Top cities visiting. So this is an interesting one because you can see Sacramento is listed here first, but I also included a subset of data here that I pulled from Google Analytics, which is where this information is from, showing that the number one answer is actually not set. And that essentially just means that most of the people who are visiting our website are not using like location services on their computer. So that means that they don't have it set to like, say that they're located in Citrus Heights or Sacramento or whichever area they live in. So you can see from this number that that's actually where most of our visitors are from. And then Sacramento being the closest and then Citrus Heights being the, the second right under there. And then San Jose. Not a huge reason for that, I would believe.
Moving.
All right. We'll go on to our newsletters. So our newsletters is something I'm really proud of. We have consistently been posting our newsletters for over a year. Our general newsletter is anything and everything Citrus Heights related. We have 2,600 subscribers and an average open rate of 47%, which is awesome. The industry average is like 7%, y'all. This is great. So we're, we're really just happy to see that people are opening those newsletters. We continuously have good clicks throughout the entirety of the newsletter, even at the very last link at the bottom. So that's something we love to see, people engaging, getting their information from the source and learning about what's going on in their city.
I don't get the news.
This year, we launched a new newsletter called the Business Bulletin. This one is all economic development related and directly, goes directly towards our businesses. This goes to all existing businesses. And every month when we get new business licenses, we also upload them. So they have the opportunity to opt out. Most of them don't. But then once they opt in, they get, they get this business bulletin and that. And we sent out five of those last year and plan to continue sending those out through this year as well, just with business information, updates from the city, things we want our businesses to know, events, other things we've got going on, focused primarily on businesses. Media relations. So this is the part of my job where I interact with our local media. This can include the Sentinel, the Messenger, CBS News, which you can see are our top sources here. We fielded approximately 86. The way this data was collected was me going through my email. So we had about 86 media inquiries fielded, which is quite a few. And thanks to our amazing team, we have a really good track record on answering those before their deadline. So I'm appreciative to them for that. 4,697 media mentions. This number may look small when you think about our city as a whole. But it's, it's, it's an interesting number because it's actually bigger. And I say that it's bigger, but include this number because when I grab Citrus Heights, just as a whole, Citrus Heights, we're going to get media mentions from coupon clippings, traffic alerts, all sorts of things, which are not the root of the media mentions that we want to be seeing. So this is the purest form of media mentions actually talking about the city of Citrus Heights and not just anything happening in Citrus Heights. Our media sentiment remains pretty neutral, which is great. We like to see the negative is the lowest. That's awesome. And neutral is good. We will take neutral. They say any news is good news, but that's not always the case.
What is the negative category? Is that like murders?
Yep, it can be murders.
Accidents.
Theft, any, any sort of, your traditional negative sentiment.
Not anything like that we control by our policies, like Citrus Heights has a bad policy about some.
No, unless.
Bad things that happened in our city.
It's bad things that happened and the messaging of like a headline. Let's say like the headline includes like threat to Citrus Heights is the new policy that council created. Then it's going to be, since you included the word threat.
That's not, no, we're always on that positive.
Exactly. So it generally trends to be, tends to be the more traditionally negative stories. Yes.
Okay.
All right. Next is our awards and accolades. Our team is small but mighty. This year we received, or last year, we received four Public Relations Society of America awards from our local chapter, one for the Citrus Heights Cares Campaign, our Citrus Heights Cares Guide, City Scoops, which we know our community loves, and State of the City. So we're very proud of those awards and to have received those and the work that we've done to, to earn those awards. What to look for in 2025? We will be welcoming a Sac State intern. I am very excited. Yeah, claps. She will be joining us next week and here throughout the semester. So she'll be with us till May. So we're really excited to have her on our team and for her to learn from us and us from her. It's a mutual experience and we're really looking forward to welcoming her. We want to grow our engagement on social media. Like I said, we want people engaging. I tend to do a lot, some questions to test the waters on our social posts. I'll say, what was your favorite park in Citrus Heights? And see how many people bite. We're not getting a lot of those bites right now, but my hope is that we'll continue to in 2025, get a little bit more of that. We'll also be doing an Auburn Boulevard Business Support Social Media Campaign. So with our Auburn Boulevard Phase Two happening, we are seeing our businesses obviously impacted and as best we can do to make sure that our residents know they're open. We know that our communications channels hold a lot of power and weight in helping tell their story and make sure that people know that they're open and available for business. So we're going to be doing a social media campaign highlighting businesses across Auburn Boulevard. And we're really looking forward to sharing our local businesses and especially the ones on Auburn. Thank you. I'd love to answer any questions you have.
Anybody have questions?
No questions really, but just the, the post, oh, sorry. I thought it was wrong. The post count is so impressive. It was 690 or something?
Yeah.
Posts, my goodness. And it's really cool to see the difference in engagement between Instagram and Facebook. We have half the followers on Instagram, but I think the engagement is weighted higher. So that's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good job.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, same here. I, I thought the report was great.
Thank you.
Very excited to see that you guys have achieved everything that you outlined when we first started this process two years ago. And you've like basically just blown my mind. It's just, you know, incredible results. Thank you so much for that comprehensive report.
Absolutely. Thank you for listening.
I wanted to, to chime in on the little-known LinkedIn page. I really appreciate that because for me, I get to know who our professionals are in, on staff and the engagement there. And, you know, LinkedIn is a very different space and I'm, I'm glad that you're getting engagement there as well because that's really how professional. because that's really how professionals get to see that this is a city they may want to consider for employment.
Absolutely.
Well, I have nothing but awe because I don't do social media. So I'm in awe at all of the various outlets that you utilize. You know, when I was running for city council, I was told, you've got to have social media. So I had Natalie do my Facebook page. So since then, I've never done anything with it. But when I go there, I see all these people have liked me or friended me and I'm going, I don't even pay attention to it. So kudos to you to be, you can keep up with all of this. Looks like you spend a lot of time, and not you, that's your job, but for average people. That's time consuming, just to go through emails and texts and everything else. So that's a lot of, a lot of work.
Yeah, it is. It's awesome though. It's great. It's a great way to communicate with people. And to your point, Councilmember Lopez Taft, that people get, from LinkedIn, right? You said people get to see the people behind City Hall. And that's something that during my time at the city of Citrus Heights, I've continued to try to bring into all of our channels because I think the more people see the people behind the doors, the seal, the logo, the more they understand the work that we're doing and the effort that we're putting into every single project that goes into our city. And so I'm very proud of our social media presence. It's something that I look at and I'm like, yes, this is something I'm very proud to present to you today and the community that we've built around it and continue to build. So yeah, thank you. I appreciate, appreciate your kind words.
And if people haven't seen the newsletter from Area One, it was very, very well done. That newsletter that-
Scroll.
Scrolls. It's a great newsletter.
Yeah, you can find that newsletter at citrusheights.net backslash NA1.
It's a great newsletter. And they give, they give information about the whole city. So it's not just their own neighborhood, but throughout the city. So until other neighborhoods, you know, have something like that, that is a good source of information. So.
Absolutely.
Kudos to Neighborhood One for that.
Thank you, Council.
Okay. Thank you, Marissa. Now we have what?
The next item is another department report, item number 17, New Year's Eve Enforcement Update.
Evening Mayor, members of council. Alex Turcot, Chief of Police. I'm here for a brief update for our New Year's Eve enforcement, specifically talking about illegal fireworks because that is definitely of serious concern for the community. So in talking about that, I know this is no, this is not news to this council nor any of the constituents here. There's a problem in Citrus Heights with illegal fireworks. Fireworks literally are playing with fire. They've caused structure fires, they've injured people, they've hurt people. And even when they go off successfully, if you will, the noise pollution itself causes stress for animals, causes stress for some of our more sensory sensitive populations, some folks with some PTSD, some other mental health issues. So where on one hand, there's the frivolity of celebration, it really is a dangerous activity that impacts a great amount of our community. So something we're really looking to try to curb. I will say that Citrus Heights is by no means alone in this issue. This is definitely a statewide, probably nationwide problem, but certainly here in our region, many of the jurisdictions that I communicate with, this is a top concern on Fourth of July and New Year's Eve for sure. So with that, you know, we've been utilizing staff to try to figure out some of the best practices to try to curb some of this behavior, right? It's a difficult, it's a difficult activity to enforce just because the nature of utilizing these fireworks. It's a misdemeanor, which means we have to have somebody actually observe where the firework came from, especially if you're talking about launching fireworks or enforcing our municipal code. In the past, we've tried to do that alone with just our own patrol officers, even with dedicated officers. It's rough, you know, one goes off in the sky. We all know something bad is happening out there in town. But tracing that back to an actual parcel or geographic area and then being able to catch somebody in the act is, it's difficult. I know, I know that even, even council's been out on ride alongs and things and tried to do that themselves. It's just, it's difficult. So if that's not going to work, we're not going to repeat just doing that. So we're trying to find best practices in other jurisdictions of what we could look at. So since this last Fourth of July, we've really been diving into our counterparts in other local jurisdictions, Woodland, Roseville, Sacramento, Rancho Cordova, to try to see what's been working for them. In doing that, we found a couple of things that we're trying to continue to add to our toolkit. One thing that we tested this last New Year's Eve was what we call a citizen attestation program. That's a fancy word. I'll explain a little bit better here. But when we were talking to one of our, one of our allied agencies, they had actually seen success in having citizens who observed fireworks and could say that they had witnessed it sign basically a citizen's arrest form for that. You know, we do that a lot with different misdemeanors and batteries and thefts and things like that. Our loss prevention, most of our loss prevention arrests come from a citizen's arrest type of thing. What we did to kind of innovate that and make it even easier for our community to partner with us is we utilized that idea and then we utilized that idea and the success of the See Click Fix app that we have, merged them together so we could accomplish the same process legally without having an officer actually have to come out of the field, go to the house, or have the person who wants to make the complaint wait. And so for New Year's, again, fireworks is a big problem during New Year's. Not as bad as Fourth of July. Generally, it's not nearly as many. And thankfully, the environment is not as combustible during that area, but it's still significant. We used this last Fourth of July to really test and evaluate that program. So happy to say that we did get a decent community response from that. And at least we had, well, we'll talk about it here in a minute. So at a glance, in general, New Year's Eve is always busy. But for New Year's Eves, our New Year's Eve here in Citrus Heights was thankfully relatively peaceful, which was nice. Mr. Sheldon spoke earlier. We did have some folks reach out to us through email, on social media and in person, telling us that their perception of the city was, yes, there was still illegal fireworks, but there was a perception that there was less in some areas, some areas not. We had one neighborhood in particular where there was a chronic offense there that we're dealing with. But we did get that, that feedback there. Sac Metro Fire, in a report on New Year's, put out a statement basically saying that for countywide, they saw their overall service complaints decrease by 40%, which is positive. They also noted that for, I think, the first time in a while, there was no injuries or fires related to firework activity countywide, which is awesome. And obviously, we're included in that county, so no one got hurt. That's great, but we still want to stop the activity. Here in Citrus Heights, we did see a significant increase in the number of firework complaints we received. However, like I said, there is that perception. We did, because we wanted to test the citizen attestation process, we did do a pretty significant social media push, not only with the city's social media channels that Marissa was just speaking of, but also on the PD side, we pushed a social media campaign called You Light It, We'll Sight It. We tried to, we tried to touch the, as much as we could with the info leading up from basically the day after Christmas up to New Year's Eve, trying to warn people that this was going to happen and try to influence them to curb that behavior. So there's not enough data to say if it worked or not, but there was some perception out there that seemed to help a little bit. We did get 17 citizen attested complaints. And these were basically citizens saying that they were willing to be the witness to allow us to press charges. We're having to vet those to make sure that they are viable complaints. We want to make sure we're not unduly charging people when it just may be a tiff between neighbors or things like that. So we have a criteria that we're going through currently to vet those out. So likely won't be nearly as many as 17, but it was encouraging that 17 citizens at least wanted to partner, wanted to be part of the solution. It's one of the best parts about Citrus Heights really is when we have a problem like that, we work together with the community to try to solve for them. But they also support us by being that person and being that witness, which has been, which has been very helpful. So with that, that is basically the report at a glance. But I'm welcome to discuss any questions or answer anything that council may have.
I'm going to go to her first.
Thank you so much, Chief. I really do appreciate your efforts. I know this has been an ongoing issue. And I personally, you know, I stay up for New Year's Eve and Fourth of July as well. And it was significantly quieter in my neighborhood. I think by 12:15, there was not a peep in my neighborhood. And that was incredible because the year before, it was like World War III. So thank you for your efforts. The social media campaign, I think, really pays off. And your statistic of higher, higher volume of complaints, I think that's because we have a mechanism for complaints.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I don't, I don't really take that as there were more, more activity, just more ability to, to log your issue. So thank you very much for your effort and your staff.
Well, thank you, ma'am. And just to dovetail into that, it is worth noting that our overall calls for service for the night compared to last New Year's did decrease by 12%. So the fireworks specific category, because of See Click Fix and some other things, that one had increased. But overall, we did see a decrease of overall impact to our call center.
Councilwoman Schaefer?
Thanks, Chief. So I just want to make this very, very clear that all we did in adopting our latest illegal fireworks measures was that we took what was already illegal and we established a, an easier method of enforcement, meaning the social host piece of it. I think people have the perception that somehow we made the illegal fireworks illegal. Now that was, that's a state statute. Am I correct?
You're absolutely correct, sir, that illegal fireworks remain illegal.
These are explosives we're talking about here.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
These are not firecrackers, which a firecracker isn't explosive. But nonetheless, these are explosive we're talking about having the general public unlicensed people handling. That makes it really dangerous. And, and that's something that I think that, you know, that we're the bad guys because somehow we're trying to create some enforcement here. It's about safety and it's about the quality of life that we live here. And so I think that, yeah, I get a little pushed out of shape when people start looking at me and saying, well, you made this. No, I didn't make this illegal. This was illegal long before we touched it. So anyhow, that's the point I wanted to make.
You want to tell your story?
No. Maybe one day, not now.
It's a good story.
Councilwoman Middleton, did you have something you wanted to add?
Just, you know, great job, Chief. You and your search team have done a really good job of doing, dealing with this. I, you know, went out of town for New Year's Eve, but I did hear back from my mother who is avid that like, you're scaring all the dogs, you're scaring the neighbors. We live in an area that has a lot of veterans. And the fact that we did see a decrease and folks were able to rest easy was very, very comforting. And I appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing to make, make a difference here.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Nelson, you had something to add?
Yes, just thank you very much, Chief. I, I did hear some fireworks in my neighborhood. I'm probably close to the chronic offender that you mentioned. But I'm very happy to hear that there were no injuries. That's great. And just thank you for all you do.
Oh, I thought I was close to the chronic offender.
It's a small city. We're all close to each other.
My question is, I agree that, I agree with Mr. Sheldon and everybody that we're fewer this year, I think. But what I heard more of was guns. So did you get gun complaints, you know, firing? There's definitely a difference in the noise. And sometimes it was like a boom, like it was a cannon boom.
Right.
And I thought, you know, I don't know what those are because I'm too afraid to go out my door, it might hit me. And so I don't know where it's coming from or what the noise is. But do you get those complaints? It's like one big jump.
I would, I would almost guarantee that we did. It did not rise to one of our top reported incidents of the night. It wasn't in our top 10.
Well, it's hard to say because it's only one time and then it might wait 10 minutes and there'd be another boom. And so I just wondered what that noise was.
It probably was some, exactly what you're thinking of. I mean, there are fireworks that do sound like gunshots or some other things. But there, I would not be remiss in betting that there was live rounds going off on a New Year's Eve. It's a, you talk about fireworks being dangerous. That is another real significant kind of no duh danger that folks should just understand. Firearms safety, if you, you know, we'll get into whether or not people should even have some of the firearms that they have. But firearm safety never includes going out during a party and putting live rounds into it.
Well, people think if they shoot it in the air, it doesn't go anywhere. But it's like the guy said, it comes down, you know, and so it could do-
Well, I would tell you, a lot of people try to shoot fireworks off in the air and they end up going parallel to the ground and hitting the car or house. So I would assume that the same level of intoxicants that caused that to happen are probably not smart with firearms either.
Well, I hope some of those 17 work out so that we have, the message gets out, that social media gets out that you don't want to have fireworks in Citrus Heights.
Well, and regardless if they don't all meet the criteria, any confirmed addresses, we will definitely at least be in contact with to let them know.
We're on to them.
That this was an issue. We do regularly send out those warning letters ahead of Fourth of July for repeat offenders and things as well.
I like to see what happens the Fourth of July if what happened this time, you know, rolled over to July, that people are a little more weary of being caught, you know?
That's, that's really the plan because the social host ordinance and this enforcement frankly does not stop it while it's happening. The hope is that the word of mouth, much like a traffic citation, right? Nobody likes getting a traffic citation. We have all gotten them. But a lot of times, the penalty associated with that, the story gets told, the word of mouth spreads that people are serious. The government is serious. It's not cute to have illegal fireworks and do the lot. So we're hoping that responsible folks will weigh out.
Did the department have to respond to any calls, you know, other than these 17 attestations? Did you actually go out to any calls?
We still responded in, you know, in line with other calls as we can. But like, again, it's really hard by the time we can get out there too because New Year's Eve is busy on other areas. Again, relatively peaceful, which I'm thankful for this year. But there's still parties, there's still DUIs, there's still arrests being made. So we still responded. There wasn't any, there wasn't any citations issued that night in the moment.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Is there a next item? Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
The next item is City Manager Items.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ash Feeney, your City Manager, I do have a few updates for you, but I want to thank our staff for all the presentations they put together tonight. A lot of information getting out to the public and to our council. I can go to the next slide, please. Hey, speaking of success stories, we had our business attraction grant that this council granted to Dark Heart Brewing. This was a relocation of a business that was closing, that was just outside of the city limits. They had all their brewing equipment and everything and a successful business. And the following included many Citrus Heights residents, several that I heard from during this process that encouraged this, this to happen. But Dark Heart Brewing did open their doors just recently, just before the end of the year. And they're currently open now, Monday through Friday, four to nine, Saturday, two to nine, and Sunday, 12 to five. So they're over at Sylvan Corners. And that is something that the council supported, is in line with those business attraction grant guidelines. But I just wanted to announce that we did have a good success story there. So. And then we have a free flu shot clinic coming up here in Citrus Heights. And that is on Thursday, January 16th from 10 to 3:00, and that will be here at City Hall. And then finally, in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King, we will be observing Martin Luther King Junior Day and closing City Hall on Monday, January 20th. And that concludes my updates.
Which means no Monday with the mayor on that day. Thank you. Is there a next item?
The next item is items requested by council members and future agenda items.
Mary Jane, do you think? Tim? I got two things. I just wanted to, one is calling all nonprofits. And so anybody who is or knows nonprofit, it is a $100,000 grants available through the Greater Sacramento County. And they have two grants to award. And they are having, the application is open from January 13th to March 22 at midnight. And if you are interested in having a session with, training sessions to be held Wednesday, January 22, I have a flyer and I'm just wondering, you know, we have so many nonprofits that might qualify for this grant. And so they use their TOT money from their transient occupancy taxes for this. And so if I give this to you, can, can we do something with social media?
I think we've got, we heard about some channels tonight. We can get the word out wide tonight. So yeah, I'll take that from you, Mayor. Thank you.
And then there was one other thing that's really cool that's happening. Sometimes I get emails that nobody else gets. This is, you know, you know, our Family Justice Center that we associate with. Okay, so they provide, this is, Saturday is Blue Saturday is to make awareness of human trafficking. But there is a premiere film, a film free at the Guild Theater, which is on 35th Street on January 30th. And it's, it's Human Trafficking Awareness Month is this January. And they're putting on this story of survival- Awareness Month. It's this January, and they're putting on this, a story of survival called Hope Rising, will share an unfiltered, never-before-seen glimpse into Sacramento region's well-established human trafficking industry. And they'll have trafficking survivors, law enforcement, specialized healthcare professionals, and the anti-trafficking team will, will take viewers on a tour as survivors fight the evil life and find hope. So that is on January 30th, 6:00 PM at the Guild Theater. I'll give you that, too. That's all I have.
Okay.
What's next? We bang the gavel? Is it next?
There are no further items.
Adjourned.